Any public discussion on any item on this agenda and only on this agenda?
I would like to say something. Again, I can remove myself back to the back if you want me to or how you want me to do it. I just want to thank you guys. I was totally against pulling someone into the position that you have asked Jennifer to step in and do. I was totally against it. I will admit that from the very get-go. I was one of the biggest ones that was against it. But I believe Jennifer stepped up when she was asked to step into this position. She has been very fruitful at it. She's been very helpful at it. The courthouse has looked so nice. I've heard so many compliments on it. And I know it was not just her. I know you guys had a big step in that also. But again, I just, I feel like she went above and beyond what she was asking to do. She still had her regular job to do. She still had things to do. She kind of stepped in here blind, doing what you guys asked her to do. And I just want you guys to know that she's done a good job. She's helped with schedules. My office went from getting cleaned every four to six months to getting cleaned every week. And I appreciate that more than you guys will ever know. She's come in and asked each officer, you know, what we wanted, what we expected, and it's been done. And she's done a really, really good job. Like I said, I admit I was the first one that said, we don't take this position. But she's done a really good job.
Anybody else?
I also appreciate Jennifer. She has done a lot of organizing and she'll pick up the slack where needed. Last week, Judge's bathroom sink finally got cleaned for the first time probably since I've been here. She saw it and noticed the need cleaned and she cleaned it. And before picture and after picture, it was dramatically different. She's just done a lot of things through the courthouse that have made things better, and I think she's done a good job.
Any?
I want to add to it. I appreciate everything that she does. She always seems to have a smile on her face and pretty cheerful and does go about her job and does a good job at it. And I just want to add also, since we started that.
Anyone else?
Well, I'm on the fair board. It seems like things have got out of hand out there. Singling out people. More or less overstepping their bounds. And I don't care for the drama. All the stuff we've been going through here lately. Had a couple pretty rough meetings. I don't know. It hadn't been that way before.
Tyler, Jennifer's one there behind you. Anybody else? Minutes?
I'm going to check in a minute.
I'll second that.
Everybody in favor?
Aye.
Can I go ahead and skip down?
Yeah, both. I need to vote to enter or not to enter in the next concession. The discussion's finished. I have a general.
I'll make the motion right there.
Second.
All in favor?
Open session.
No second? All in favor?
Aye. Well, I'll make the motion that we hire Karen Parker for head housekeeping.
All in favor?
I'll second that.
All but Nathan. All in favor?
Aye.
Nathan. Okay.
Jay, second it.
I would second it.
Head of asking.
That's right there on.
Is there a particular start time or what are we going to set a start time? After the holidays? First, first of, is first of the year sound good? I mean, is that? What do you want to do? Does that give you time to?
Yep, that'll work.
First of the year?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Thank you very much. Appreciate it, Jennifer.
You're welcome.
Yes.
Jay, you voted to go in?
Yes. Jay voted to go back to their open meeting.
We have a copy of the, so that we have a record in here. It won't be today. It won't be tomorrow. Wednesday. I have a copy of it right here.
You know it's automatic when I second you that.
Yeah.
You can't vote instantly.
Okay, let's go back to.
I.
M and O. M and O, hands.
My phone's going to the guy's head water line. I hope so. I'm sure they did. I've been on top of it for a year. We broke one last week. We didn't hit it. The grader was just so heavy, the compression broke it.
Waterline?
Yes, that's true.
You did, right?
Yes, yes. Well, we can just start getting deep close to them. Fifty-six thousand pound grader.
Goring, western part of South Alton County up here where the woods kind of rule our, like.
Challow.
They flagged one the other day. We hit it thirty feet and where they flagged it. Thirty feet.
Well, this and here actually wasn't on the real waters list. Some plumber had plumbed it in years and years ago. The land on and on both sides of the road. He just trashed his own water line across the road and never told nobody.
Oh.
He just saved himself a meter bill.
Well, you might be right.
Okay. Because we didn't have it on our holiday schedule for 2021 to take off Friday. So if, don't come in Monday because nobody will be. I better tell you that or I could go, oh, we're talking about Tuesday. Okay, come in Tuesday.
I can believe that. And she'll have a bunch of paperwork if you need that.
And you can come up prior to that if you want to. That's entirely up to you. Come on Mondays. But anytime, come up and I'll have it ready for you.
Okay.
And you can take it with you or you can fill it out here, whatever you want to do.
I got a little sticky note from Marvin here. What's? It's on this general government.
Might have been attached to this one.
It's really sticky.
He doesn't like those. He has to sign somewhere else.
Yeah, I noticed that. That's better than your old yellow paper you kept.
It's not mine. That is not my neat handwriting. I can't write that. That would be Kathy's, so it would be her own personal. I just had all yucky solid colored ones.
See you gentlemen later. Ladies?
Have a good day. Happy Thanksgiving.
See ya. I always have a good day.
Ah, yes, you do. You do. Do I need to stay longer?
Not that you want to watch a bunch of time.
No.
Yeah, you just want to watch a bunch of work.
Not right now.
Thank you.
Uh-huh. Thank you.
We moved it to last. We're revising Lannister.
I'm surprised Lannister didn't put me on last. I think she puts on as it come, right? Pretty much. I don't have time to make a choose. Lucky they get it on there.
That's what they say about the road crossing permit, huh?
I leave them on one time and it's like, one time in nine and a half years. Boy, I gotta leave it off all the time. Never hear anything. Nobody says a word that I left it on there for nine and a half years that you know. That brought shoulders back.
Well, we gotta have some to throw at you.
On the news, how many times in the whole night I wake up and go, oh. Thank you for that. I sent it to you. Now I can look at my phone and go, oh, it's on. Okay, anyways. See, it helps to vote. Helps us vote that I sent that picture to you.
I've been blaming not being able to sleep the last two weeks on this full moon. It's, I swear this full moon is.
Okay.
Eye roll and toss and think and churn and.
Are you my best friend?
I do too, but. I had a lot coming at us the last few weeks. It's just. I've been driving about this two-day work week.
Again, I don't, you're coming in.
Oh, well, I know that, but.
Times different at home.
What did you charge me then?
Oh, your AR? Eighty-five.
Eighty-five, okay.
And he's one of the best hands.
I've had him out of the way. He's on our map, right?
Yes, yes. Only problem, if he wants to, on a farm, it's great because he can run for a month and just take a grand hole. But we need every little item and then we've got to stay on top of the building.
Oh, oh, I see what you're saying.
Yes.
Itemize a little bit.
Yes, yes. That's the only trouble. Mom's, mom's only long time about, send me a bill, send me a bill. And on a farm, I just pile it up. I'd rather pay one big bill than fifteen little bills.
Did he have a shot?
No, he does all mobile service.
I saw he's all on service, but I never watched the eight people.
Bill on the phone right there. I'm sorry. And the upside down.
I'm actually again.
Basically changed. Shift M and O.
I'll second that.
No, in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Blanket purchase orders.
Blankets, we have District One Sheriff EMS and County General. Sheriff J, the town judge, if you want to. Just don't sign those.
So I need to sign all these?
Yep. She doesn't get it. It doesn't go like that.
Monthly officer, maybe four hundred. What's it cost four hundred dollars for a monthly officer, maybe?
That's just a blanket we put on.
Oh.
Yeah, for the minutes. We have to publish those numbers. So we could have, we just put it over four hundred.
Second.
Marvin and Jake.
You guys want to move down?
Jennifer?
Jennifer? Opening award bid for accessory for 2021. I want to be able to pick up, sure. With or with a trade in of two thousand twelve Chevy Traverse.
Get that same thing. She did that little thought of sure. One bid was submitted. Give you guys the reminder, the reminder specs that I had put out there, so.
A lot of them told me that you can't get them, didn't you?
Well, I thought I'd have more bids than one. We sent them to four different ones that said that they thought that they could get some of them.
Okay, cross-country Chevrolet. And with, without trade is thirty-two thousand six hundred five. With trade is twenty-four thousand one oh five.
What's that without, with trade?
With, without trade is thirty-two six oh five.
Okay.
With trade is twenty-four one oh five. What's the difference? Or anybody got?
Eight thousand dollars.
Eight thousand five hundred dollars.
Yeah.
Does anybody have a recent, actual value of that vehicle? Just an idea. What's mileage on it?
It's sixty-five thousand miles.
Can Kelly Blue Book it?
Can Kelly Blue Book it, please? Because I know that you can sell them cars outright pretty high.
Better than eighty-five hundred?
Well, let's see what Kelly Blue Book costs. Which way you want to go? You want to go with trade? At least you get rid of it.
The thing is, I feel like that's an eighty-five hundred. I have that Kelly Blue Book too.
For sure.
I do know that the underside of that is the.
Oh, that's the vehicle.
What's the trade in? What year is that?
Two thousand twelve.
D two L, yeah.
Chevrolet.
Then the takeup is two thousand, right?
No.
No, takeups.
Yeah.
Mileage is sixty-five thousand?
Yes. The condition, I don't know what you put, but.
Just call it fair.
Yeah. I don't know that it's average.
They're offering a 2021 Chevrolet Colorado.
Is it four-wheel drive?
No, the.
No, the Traverse.
No, the Traverse is.
All wheel.
All-wheel drive. It's just the LT. It's the lowest, most.
One thing about it saves my head.
I said with standard equipment instead of having to go through all those selections.
Standard equipment.
Three point six.
I feel like if you auction it off, you're going, you're looking at more paperwork, but. You want to say fair, good, fair.
Fair.
Okay, so it says the trade-in is, the trade-in range is sixty-five hundred to eight thousand two fifty-one. Trade-in value is seven thousand three seventy-six.
Trade it in.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Hold on, wait. What are we doing?
We're.
So we're accepted this and we're going to trade it in?
We're accepting this bid.
Yes, yes. We'll accept this bid and we'll trade in.
The bid meets all my specs.
Okay.
And I'm asking.
Jay made the motion. I'll second it.
Full wheel drive, tow haul.
Okay. Does it have an example of what the terms of the lease would be?
Yeah, I can go back page there. Term, uh.
Monthly.
Four years, monthly. Annual interest rate is six point oh four.
Six point oh four interest?
Yep.
And payment seven.
What was the interest in?
Six point oh four.
And what was the payment?
Payment seven sixty-two forty-eight.
Seven sixty-two forty-eight.
Oh, wait a minute. That's on, well, I guess that's on thirty-six.
That's on thirty-six?
No, thirty-two thousand principal.
Thirty-two six oh five.
That's without the trade.
That's without the trade.
Okay, we're on the wrong page.
So with the trade-in.
Will be five sixty-three seventy-one per month.
Same interest, same term.
Everything else same.
That's a, that's a good payment, I feel like.
That's a good payment.
You'll have to remind me in June of every year that we'll have to send in. You have to send us a letter saying that they're renewing the lease because your lease can only be for one part of the year.
Okay, that was Jay and you.
Okay. They said it was a 2021 Chevy Colorado, four-wheel drive.
Any road crossings?
None.
Estimated needs for FY 2021 to 2022, financial statement for 2020, 2021, and a remainder budget spreadsheet.
This is my spreadsheet that you guys assigned earlier, so I just put in his, the actual estimate needs where we had just asked for the other one. So I need this signed. Jay, I need you to sign the first two pages on here and the last page. And then you guys just sign the last page on here and the last page on this.
You sign at the bottom of your second page.
Yes. Thank you all for looking for us. Linda, will you contact Croft or do I need to?
I'll send them an award letter.
I mean, you can contact them also if you want to, but I'll send them an award letter and I, there won't be a copy of the POs and she'll fill in lease purchase. Right, then we'll talk to make the lease contract. That's their responsibility to send that in. Right, right. I'll post the agenda at three o'clock on Wednesday, so if they want it all next week, I don't have much time to get that to you, so.
Okay, I'll give them the call.
Got the very first page. You missed it too, sorry. And then the very last page.
Sorry. These guys were in the office. They should have come in the corner of you again and had to sign a few places so you don't have so many.
It's all like yellows when it's glasses. It's blinding.
Well, I took off some of the yellow ones, so it wouldn't be so many.
Got it, Clark.
That's on the only game line there.
Sir, they accepted our publication from when we signed it earlier. So actually Thursday of last week was the end of our two-week protest period, so we're.
I'll make the motion.
We're not behind.
Good. All in favor?
Aye.
Yeah, revised twenty twenty-two holiday schedule.
I'm sorry, I have.
She mapped out.
I have Good Friday on Saturday and they didn't want to do Saturday.
Good Friday on Saturday, how about that? I move with step to revise holiday schedule, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Revised twenty twenty-two BLC meeting schedule.
I had you taken off, um, June tenth, and then there was one on December, anything else off?
On the meeting.
On the meeting schedule, yeah.
We battled that holiday deal and see if they had that noted meeting the other day for that, well, ooh.
I'm making a motion.
Second.
Revised twenty twenty-two XO meeting schedule.
Same way.
It's a shuffle.
I'm moving with step to revision.
All in favor?
We send those out, but again, it will not be today or tomorrow, all gets sent out on Wednesday.
End of action for bids, construction new bridge number twenty-two fifty-seven located Kinnell Road North, twenty-five eighty and Lambert Bluff.
This is the bridge and we accepted the, the award of the bid to Kremlin Welding. Well, there's an issue with the bid, we can't get it bonded, and we're going to take a step back, we're going to reject all the bids. Or this is my plan of actions, I want to reject all the bids. I want to look at going underneath there and taking some of the, it's got holes, holes in the piling. I want to take the pilings out, re-weld some new pilings in it, push some new ones in beside it and reconstruct the bridge.
Just fix what you got.
Fix what I got, I've already applied for the twenty thousand dollars from CED. And I'm going to use that twenty thousand dollars to build, I'm going to probably exceed the twenty thousand dollar deal, but that's still much cheaper than the option. The other two bids are a third more than what his bid was, and I just, I just think it's just, just too much.
And if it can be repaired?
And, and it's got a great floor in it, the bridge has a wonderful floor and it's got good side rails. So, so honestly, I think dollar for dollar, when, when we're said and done, we're going to be just as happy. Now, the bridge is on the deficient list simply because of the width. It's an old WPA bridge and it's too narrow to meet width. But, uh, it's just going to stay on the deficient list because we can't widen out a bridge any wider, you know. So that, that was the main reason I wanted to change it, was to get it off the deficient list, because I was going to widen it back up to new standards. Well, at this point, I'm going to just rebuild it, it'll stay on my list as deficient and I'll just, but as long as I can get my tonnage up there where it needs to be.
I was going to say, what's your tonnage going to be there, not going to screw you or anything?
No, hey, this is the funny thing, that bridge had a fifteen ton rating. And it came a big flood and washed the dirt out and exposed the hole, it went from a fifteen ton to a three ton bridge in one year. And, uh, and honestly, I got problems with that, but I'll.
I do too.
I'll deal with that later.
I do too.
But, uh.
So you're making the motion to reject the bids?
I want to make a motion to reject the bids and take a new plan of action.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Private property says easement for District Three Northwest Corner, four twenty-three eleven, ditch work. You want trees right away to replace apartments.
Just a copy of that?
I'm going to cut the pilings off. Where the holes are, just to plate the whole way around it.
Oh, yeah. If, if you got five pilings or eight.
Eight pile. That'd be real easy to replace.
I'll make the motion.
Second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Yeah, I can't, no, I can't figure out how you drop the low rating that much.
And me and him had a long, long talk.
Oh, I know.
In my office over that.
Project agreement for District One for bridge approaching northeast, north-south, two fifty-two, over Lowell Mule Creek. Project number, or job piece, thirty-five, four fifteen oh four.
I'm moving with step.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Project agreement for District Two for bridge approaching north-south, twenty-five fifty at three fifteen for DDIR. Project jobs, job piece, thirty-five, four twenty-six.
I'll make the motion to accept this one.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. This is them concrete pipes that stain free and they're not going to break.
Yeah, they're shell corm.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's the bridge. I'll beat Jane to this, I'm making a motion to Jane.
I guess there's no one for same business.
Waiting on that thing, you cheated.
I was going to, I had to cheat to beat you.
I'll second it. All in favor?
Aye.